I understand that we're going to be, the board's going to consider all of these hearings in one group. So I'll just give you a very brief overview of where we're here. And before I even do that, I just want to put on the record and I informed the chair previously that I received a call from David Reed, who represents a number of butters. Mr. Reed is unavailable to be at this hearing due to a personal matter. And he has asked that I requested the chair that she hold the public portion of the meeting open for him to make comments at a later time. And I've passed that request on to Sharon. There were three applications in front of the board right now. The first is an appeal of building commissioner Paul Fowler's determination that the, that the previous stripping of topsoil and removal of trees or cutting down of trees constituted quarrying under the wealthed zoning by law. And we appealed that determination. The second appeal was, and as the board may or may not know from looking at the packet, I engaged in a, not lengthy, but a fairly detailed back and forth with the building commissioner to try to make sure that we presented to him a complete explanation of the intended use of the property so that he could make his determination of the zoning relief that was required. So the board has in its packet, a series of emails back and forth between myself and Mr. Fowler, including descriptions of the proposed use that I'll relate to the board in a little bit. And then, and based on those descriptions and a plan presented to the building commissioner, he issued a determination that the proposed use of the property constituted a contractor's yard as defined in your, in your bylaw, which is permitted right in the commercial district. But that part of this use, which was described as the storing of various materials and supplies used in connection with the contractor's yard being topsoil, stone, sand, and other materials that would be stored, open stored for the purposes of the contracting business that's proposed there. The building commissioner determined that that was a separate use. Bulk storage open, which is a use that requires a special permit in the commercial district. And if that is in fact a separate use, then it would require a second special permit for multiple principal uses on one lot. And further, the billing inspector opined or determined that if we intend, our client intends to process or screen topsoil or loam on the property, that would be a light industry use, which is also a use that requires a special permit from this board. So what we're asking the board to do tonight is to first and foremost, to consider and determine that the, the activity that, that has already occurred is not a quarrying industry as defined by the bylaw. And the reason for that is because the bylaw defines quarrying as the, the removal of materials off-site to be used off-site. And then it specifically exempts out, you know, alteration of lots in connection with construction that's intended to be taken place there on by building company. So because the materials that were, that were manipulated outside haven't been removed from the site and they're not intended to be, to be used or sold off-site, we don't believe that's a quarrying use. So we hope that the board will vote to overturn the billing inspector that it's not a quarrying use. Second of all, we asked the board to determine that the storage of materials on site is in fact part of a contractor's yard used as permitted on the site. And the reason for that is this, and the board, I believe, has seen the written materials that we provided, but the intended user of the site is GFM Enterprise. It's Greg Morris and his company. It's a company that engages in excavating contracting for the building trade. Meaning what they do is they clear lots, they dig, they dig foundation holes, they, they install septic systems, they do driveway repairs and maintenance. And all of those involve either removing from a site certain materials or bringing into the site certain materials. For example, if they're installing a septic system, they're going to be digging a hole, installing into the, into the site, septic components, the larger of which are brought independently on site by the septic component manufacturer. But the smaller components such as risers and caps and things like that will be stored at the construction yard and brought to the site. They would bring onto a site, meaning Greg Morris would bring onto the site native stone, which would be, which would be installed around the septic components. And, and those materials would be, would be stored on site at the, at the side of Old Wharf Road. So those, and then when materials are removed from a site, for example, a foundation hole is dug, clean fill is, is removed from the site, from the, from the project brought to this site, stored on site, it may go back to the site or it may be taken to another site for use for either clean fill or to sort of fill in a septic system, et cetera. They would store on site topsoil for, for, for looming and seeding when they're done installing septic system. And so all of these materials are supplies that are used in connection with the contractor's yard use. The yard use itself, which I will describe, not because we require a permit for it, but it will help the board understand whether or not the materials and supplies are part of that use. Is what GFM would do is it would store certain equipment on site. And the proposal is, is, is two one-ton dumps, two 10-wheel trucks. They would store on site a loader, they would store on site skid steers, other material and trailers. And employees would come to the site in the morning. It's anticipated at the beginning would be two employees. It may be more if it gets, if they do more work in this area. They would come to the site, they would park their vehicles, they would get into the company vehicles. They would leave for the day or not for the day, but they would leave roughly seven o'clock in the morning, they would go to the job site. They would come back to the job site during the day to drop off some materials or to pick up some materials. They would use the loader to put stone, for example, into a truck and drive the truck off-site. And then at the end of the day, they would come back and park the vehicles and then they would, they would go home. So this is a satellite operation. GFM has its principal operation in Dennis. They have approximately 30 employees, but this would allow them to, to use the site to provide these services in the lower and outer Cape without having to truck materials back and forth through Eastham, Orleans, Brewster, et cetera, to get to where they're going. So what I've described is in fact a, a building contractor or subcontractor that provides the services. And, and the materials that are being proposed to be stored on site are in fact those supplies that are to be used in connection with their, with, that's defined in the bylaw. So we're hoping that the board will, will determine after a discussion that in fact the storage of those materials, as I've described, removal of materials to the site, from the site, used for the septic system construction, used for the road repair, used for gravel and driveways, et cetera. These materials are not for sale to the public. There won't be a retail component. There won't be people coming, other people, other than the employees of GFM coming on the site to remove or, or materials. This isn't, this site won't be manned by employees. There won't be a building constructed to house or, or any operations of any site. So it's, it's nothing more and nothing less than that contractor's yard. The board has a, a plan, and the most recent plan was submitted earlier this week or last week. It's the Mass DOT curb cut permit. It shows the board where the curb cut is proposed off of Route 6. The property has substantial frontage on Route 6. This use is going to require the final approval of a curb cut. It was a previous curb cut approved by the DOT for the storage unit use that never was, was, was commenced. Because use was not commenced, that curb cut permit failed and the applicant needs to reapply for that. So they're going to have to comply with any requirements under that curb cut permit to get in. The bylaw requires for the use of any commercial property under its landscaping provisions, that there be a, a buffered and screened area around the perimeter of the property. The plan that is presented shows the, shows the planting of plantings that meet those requirements. There are no buildings proposed to be constructed on the site. So there are no yard setbacks that are implicated, as the board is aware under your zoning code. Yards are dictated as the spaces between buildings and lot lines. But there is a, the screened area around the perimeter of the lot that's proposed. The applicant is certainly more than willing to construct fencing either along Route 6 or along the back as the board wishes, you know, fencing goes both ways. You know, it provides a nice screening, but it can be unsightly in some respects. So if the board feels that it's looking for some screening, if in fact it determines that a special permit is required and wants to condition this project in certain ways as to hours of operation, et cetera, screening, it can certainly do that. We don't believe there's special permits required. You know, we believe that, you know, as I've explained, that this particular use of these materials, these are nothing more, nothing less than the, than the supplies used in connection with an operation in the same way that a plumber's contractor's yard that wants to store pipe on site or a building contractor wants to store lumber on site or other materials can store them on site as part of their application. So that's, and Sharon, I'm making this a little brief because I know you have a lot of people that want to speak. I think I've given the board a, a good sense of our application. We're, we're here to answer any questions that you have and I want to thank you for listening.
Ben, is, is your client here tonight?
I believe that Steve DJR is online. I'm having a hard time, Sharon. There are roughly 80 participants, but I believe-
93 at the moment.
Yeah, I believe, I believe he is online. If we, if we give a shout out at some point, we'll probably get a response back. So he's supposed to, as, as our project engineer Keith Fernandez, as also Greg Morris from GFM Enterprises. I've instructed everybody on my team, Sharon, not to say a word. So if there's a question, I'll, you know, I'll direct it and ask them the answer if you don't mind.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Now I'm gonna go to the audience. I know we have many letters, including attorney Reed's letter. But attorney Reed has asked that we hold off on that. So I think we'll begin with the other letters. And first of all, I will ask anyone who is in the audience who has written a letter or not written a letter, but who wants to speak to raise your hand and I will start with you. Okay. Mister, you, you want to, I see your hand, but try to use the little button at the bottom because it's easier to see. Mr. Horowitz, Horowitz rather, Horowitz. Yes. And you'll have to unmute yourself temporarily. Are you there, sir?
How are we doing now? You can hear me?
Okay, now I can hear you, yes.
Okay. So I'd like to just, I'd like to focus not on what the requirements of a permit are, but on the parents' use of the, cutting down the trees without any permission. It seems to me that by failing to apply for a permit, they tried to bring about a fait accompli, an irreversible change in the land. As a result, the board in this case should place a heavier burden on the applicants than would have been the case if they agreed that required, if they had followed the regular process. Now, even if their application is rejected, they should be required to plant trees many more than the few that they've agreed to. And even if their permit is granted, they should be required to provide for extra stuff like a traffic light at the corner. But my main point is that the board should take account of this effort of the applicants to apply, to create a fait accompli without going through the regular process. That it seems to me that needs to be taken care of in the final result. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Brown, are you going to read your letter? Ms. Brown, where are you? Okay, you want to unmute yourself?
I am unmuted.
Okay, good, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, I don't even have the letter in front of me. I, I would prefer to say my piece. Is that all right?
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay. So what I would like to say is this, when we, we have a house at 65 East Wind Circle and had it there since 1992. When we moved to that house, immediately after we moved there, the town informed us that our drinking water was contaminated with toxic chemicals. The chemicals came from the gas station, which was located at the time in the, in the point where catch of the day is today. So the study, the hydrogeological study showed that the plume of these toxic chemicals from the gasoline, underground gasoline tank were moving straight from that location into Old Wharf Road development and then along Old Wharf Road toward Loggie Bay. It was, there were toxic chemicals, including carcinogenic benzene and other hydrocarbons. The company apologized profusely and offered us filters to purify our water. Eventually, after several years, this plume of contamination moved away and the water was again fit to drink. If this, if this applicant receives special permit for their application, I have absolutely no doubt that this story will repeat itself. It's very sandy soil. The, the piles of sand and coal and gravel, whatever they're going to keep there, comes from variety of sources. Many of them are industrial sources. Every time it rains, there will be a runoff of water straight into the same aquifer and give it another year and we will be again drinking contaminated, drinking water with carcinogens in it. I am quite familiar with it because in the 1980s, I was the chief toxicologist and risk assessor for the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And I personally dealt with hundreds of cases like that. So this is to me an old story and I have no doubt that's what's going to happen. And I very much hope that the zoning board of appeals will take that into account or at least contact Massachusetts DEP and requires a full hydrogeological study of that site to prove to us. It's, we shouldn't have to prove of danger. They should prove to us safety. So I expect that they will have to hire a full team of hydrogeologists and risk assessors to prove to us that what they propose to do is not going to destroy the drinking water. Thank you very much. I don't know, I don't hear what she's saying. What happened?
Sharon, you're not being heard.
Okay, now I hear. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I'm asking Ms. Lemme, who has her hand up, if she would unmute and, and speak. There you are. Whoops.
Hi, I'm Patty. I'm, I'm sorry, it's echoing. I'm Patty Lemme and I live at 30 Wicksum. And this project frightens me. I'm afraid on so many levels, the, the person before me spoke of the, the water. That's a huge issue. Noise, dust, diesel fumes, seven in the morning, lighting at night. And most importantly for me, property value. To have this type of business in a residential area doesn't make sense. So that's, that's about it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now I think I've seen, doesn't have the regular kind of hand, but Ms., Mr. Charney? You're coming in as Amy, Amy Ehrlich Charney. You have to unmute though. Okay. Unmute. There.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I guess I was muted. Yeah, no, my wife is Amy Charney and I'm using her computer and my name is Lou Wise. I have a house at 41 Sea Oaks, which is the first right after Wicksum Lane off of Old Wharf. And please, right now I'm talking, because I want to raise a point of order.
Yes.
I understand that we are right now supposed to be discussing the appeal from the cease and desist order. Is that correct?
We are, as I said at the beginning, I am combining all three cases as one because of the overlap.
Well, do I understand then that attorney Zender is finished with his presentation with respect to the other issues, the applications for the special permits?
At the moment, yes.
Okay. Well, as you heard from attorney Zender, well, you may not know that I'm a member of a group of about, I don't know how many now, 75 to 100 households off of Wharf Road who have organized to oppose this, these applications. And we've hired an attorney, David Reed, as you know. And unfortunately, David Reed's mother had a stroke earlier today and is in the hospital in the emergency room and David is there with her. And he's actually, his, his mother's health proxy needs to be there and he's unable to attend tonight. And of course, he was planning on making a, representing us tonight, of course, and making a presentation that would respond to all of the issues that are here tonight. And he has asked that, that the hearing be left open so that we and he can make a presentation at your next, you know, regularly scheduled meeting or a special meeting if you, if you so choose to have it. It would be far more efficient, I think, if David gave his presentation. He will be addressing the legal issues, which none of us are really able to address. And he will give you an overview of all the many reasons why the special permit should not be granted. And that could greatly shorten the public hearings because you won't have people repeating some of the, some of, you know, his arguments and, and presentation. So if you are indeed going to hope, going to hold the hearing open, and I hope you will, so that our attorney can have an opportunity to represent us and address you, I suggest that it's a far more efficient way to handle it. If we just postpone until your next meeting, all of our group's, you know, presentations.
Yeah. They, this is a public meeting that has been publicly advertised and I am obligated to let people who want to speak tonight speak. Whether or not we decide to keep it open is a decision for the board later. But I, I do feel an obligation to people who've made the time tonight to come. And I appreciate, we do, we have Mr. Reed's letter and we do want to hear from Mr. Reed. But I have to, I do have to let these people speak.
All right. Well, that would include me, so then I'm going to make my-
Okay. Go right ahead, Mr. Wise.
My, my little speech.
Yes.
You know, so first of all, I just want to start off by telling you something important that I think you already, you all already know. And that is that Wellfleetians consider Wellfleet to be a very special place for its historic preservation, its history, the national seashore, and its beauty and peace and quiet. And we take, we all take great pride in the town and strive to do as much as possible to preserve, you know, all that makes it so special. So my wife and I, my neighbors, and you will hear from many of them tonight, I guess, and Wellfleetians in general, were absolutely appalled at what the owner of Great White did to 1065 Route 6. A heavily wooded, very visible 60,000 square foot parcel. In blatant disregard of our zoning regulations, he cleared, clear cut almost the entire lot. Virtually every living thing on that lot has now been removed. He then compounded this violation of our rules with another equally serious violation, promptly stockpiling materials for his business without required permits. These piles, as you know, because pictures have been submitted to you already, these piles tower over abutting homes on Wicksum Lane. All of this illegal activity was accomplished before the cease and desist order could even be issued. Moreover, since this order was issued, he has demonstrated again his complete disdain and contempt for following our rules by actually adding more material to the site or his stockpiles. This behavior should not be tolerated and certainly not rewarded by the town. The frivolous appeal from the cease and desist should be denied by this board and the applicant should be fined in accordance with the bylaws in order to remediate the property as determined by the appropriate town officials. And as, as attorney Reed pointed out in his letter to you, your regulations require that the existing foliage and trees, whenever somebody is preparing to, to build, be preserved. And that buffer, which would have been a lot more meaningful than what he, what the, what he is now proposing, that buffer has been removed. Because as you all know, this property's been clear cut right to the property lines and right to the street lines. With respect to the applications for special permits for uses, the applicant has already illegally begun. We are opposed for many of the same reasons explained by attorney Reed in his letter and our neighbors and in my letter to the board, which you should have already received. And that includes, you've already heard some of the reasons. We are close enough so that we will be, we will be bothered by the noise from all of this heavy equipment, the loading and unloading of trucks, especially stone, the machinery that screens the materials, the backup lights on all the heavy equipment. We will definitely be impacted by this. So will people on Wicksum and probably East Wind Circle. This is not an appropriate use for this parcel. It's not suitable as your regulations, the word your regulations use. It's not suitable. There are plenty of other uses in the commercial zone, which, which our neighbor, my neighbors and I would not oppose. Many of them, such as restaurants and special service, personal service outfits. Just trying to think of some of the other uses, retail, various retail uses, storage facilities and the like. Those would be suitable for that location, but not what he is now proposing. We built our house on Sea Oaks Way back in 2003 and we chose the location because of the peace and quiet and beauty of the, of the area. We ask that you please protect our special neighborhood from the obvious damage which will be caused in the event the special permits are granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I see a hand from Mr. Brown. And you'll all just-
Yes. Thank you, thank you Chairperson Inger. You know what? There've been a lot of great points made tonight regarding aesthetics, environmental impact, noise impact. All of those things are really critical issues. But, but I want to focus on something that I really think is, is paramount here. And that's just safety. And, you know, I highlighted this in the, in the letter that I submitted to the, to the board, but I just want to emphasize it. I, I utilize the traffic light at the intersection of Marconi Beach Road and Route 6. I use the pedestrian function of that light on a very regular basis. And it's a, it's a really important traffic light. It's a really important crossing because the, you know, going east from there, the next place that a pedestrian can cross Route 6 is at Main Street. Going west, the next place you can cross is at Nauset Road in Eastham. And so it's a, it's a heavily used light. And it's dangerous. It's very dangerous. I mean, there have been numerous instances where I've pushed the button on the light, patiently waited for that to change to red light and the pedestrian signal to, to be there. And nonetheless, cars come battling through the red light. That, that light is just over a tenth of a mile from the applicant's proposed site. And I'll tell you, I listened to attorney Zender's presentation and what I, what I took from that was there will be trucks entering, you know, or there will be vehicle, personal vehicles entering in the early morning and then returning in the evening. And then, and then attorney Zender got a little vague about, well, then there's going to be some loading and unloading during the day. They'll be coming and going during the day. And I take that to mean that there will be construction vehicles and trucks entering and leaving that site. And there is no doubt in my mind that the cars that speed up to make it through that red light will speed up significantly more when they see one of these, whatever you call it, skid steers or heavy equipment vehicles. And I think it is unfortunately inevitable that, that you're going to have major accidents at that light that could very well involve personal injury and God forbid death. And, you know, I think that any benefit that could be derived from the sighting of a contractor's yard or quarry or whatever the, whatever the heck you want to call it, is greatly outweighed by the potential, the potential for that danger. So I thank you for considering that in your decision.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. I see. Let's see. It was Kathy and Kevin and Ken who came in first. Can you?
Yes. I've been at a butter in the past-
Yes, I um I've been a butter in the past in dealing with uh lots going in next door.
Um, can you, can you give us your name for the for the record there?
My name is Kenneth Grenland.
Thank you.
I'm also, I'm the chair of the Board of Health in town as well. So I I my from a job, uh we own the, my family own the mainstay motor. So I had the abutter going right next door when the Housing Authority gave the property to the Habitat for Humanity. So I understand when people go in to do work. It's not all beneficial the way it normally would look in the beginning. Right now, the property, two houses on it, it looks great. That commercial property in town is very scarce. There's been commercial property for as long as I can remember. Um, I was at the ZBA, a different board, probably fifteen years ago about um when the first initial couple, the people, the customers, when they started building that property, they had to come to ZBA because their butters wanted them to do different things. Uh, they couldn't have a tight driveway because they were thinking about skateboards. They didn't want a shell driveway because of the noise. I know they wanted to have a fence put up behind along the road all the way down past VRs. You gotta look into what you're asking an abutter to do. This company is coming in to create jobs, do work up here. Everybody needs these type of construction jobs. They need these kind of construction companies coming in. And I just don't want to have everybody in this town be against somebody because they cut down some trees. They cleared the good dirt off, which they put to good use to create the atmosphere of what they needed on their property. Now, can everybody remember going past a pallet of cement for the last ten to twelve years right on Route six? I'm I'm hoping these people do not run away scared. They stay with the project and get it done. But you're creating an atmosphere in this town that's just anti-business. And it's very hard for anybody to get anything in this town as a business going. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, now I think I saw Deborah. And can you? Um, and can you give us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you give us your full name for the secretary, please?
Yes, my name is Deborah Dickinson. And I live at eighty Western. And I want to say I really appreciate what what Arthur Brown just shared. And I fully agree with him and I have grave concerns about the safety. And what I want you all to hear is that I have lived here for thirty-six years. I have been in and out of this road many times a day, thirty-six years. The danger I have seen there is very frightening. I'm actually, you know, my heart is pounding talking to you. And I so agree with what Mr. Brown said. I have seen, I've reflected on this for the past few weeks in considering what is being proposed. And in reflecting thirty-six years, I have seen hundreds, hundreds of near very severe accidents. I have seen dozens of severe accidents. There have been fatalities out there. We, many of us know what it is like to sit at that intersection when we want to pull out onto Route six. And the westbound cars, uh oftentimes there is a blind spot. If someone is turning onto Route uh on Old Warf Road, there is a car that can pass around. There are blind blind spots. I'm very uh upset, so I'm sorry. But this is very serious. And I think this decision has the potential for life or death consequences. There are so many blind spots between summer, traffic, people unaware of where they're going, speeding up to pass cars when they're going eastbound, it's two lanes merging into one. Um, I have a seventeen year old, she's about to get her driver's license. She's terrified. She has seen accidents there. I'm terrified. I actually can't believe this is being considered because of the safety issues. And I agree with all the other issues. But I don't know how this could be considered. When I look at the size of the vehicles that are proposed going in and out of that, and I also think the way Attorney Zander spoke, there's gonna be a fair amount of activity throughout the day. There are so many blind spots. It blows my mind that this would be considered. The danger is great. We have numerous young people in this town who died on Route six and a lot of young people who live down Old Warf Road with very little ones growing up quickly. And I think this is an extremely serious situation and decision. And I just, I can't say that strong enough. I know for a fact trouble is coming. There are so many accidents out there. And I would be happy to talk to the ZBA in detail about this. What I have witnessed, what I know. I don't know if a if a traffic study can even relay what many of us who live down here have seen over the last many years. And again, thirty-six years I've been observing this. And I feel very firm that there is gonna be a lot more trouble and a lot more uh serious accidents and potentially loss of life because of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Keefe.
Hi, yes, my name is Ashley Burns Keefe. I'm in a butter at uh twenty-five Wicksum. Um, I just want to state that I am in support of the statements that Ms. Brown, Ms. Lemmy, Mr. Charney and and um Mr. Brown have stated. I myself am nine months pregnant. I'm due on Sunday with a baby. And my father, who is seventy-six uh with asthma, lives on on the road as well. So we are very concerned over the water contamination and the air quality as well as the safety for the small children on the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Corman.
Hi, uh, my name for formal record is Catherine Anne Corman. Both with feet. Uh, my husband and I have a home at twenty-five Lookout Road. I want to state at the outset that I am in favor of business. I also want to state at the outset that my daughter, when she was in her teens, caused an accident turning left from Old Warf Road onto Route six. So when people are talking about safety and business, I understand these concerns. I want to make absolutely clear as a short person that it is very difficult to see over the dashboard in normal times. And the idea that I would be having increased difficulty seeing oncoming traffic, turning cars and heavy machinery in August, when it's impossible to make a left turn anyway. And there may be fencing around what is now a completely razed property, R A Z E D. Puts a fear guard into me. I don't want to cause an accident. I don't want to hurt anybody by, you know, I can't see. And I certainly do not want to be hit. And I don't want to see anybody getting hit. So for the record, on behalf of my husband and myself, I am deeply opposed to what Great White is proposing here. And I am encouraging the ZBA to maintain its position that this is a very bad idea uh and should not go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and now I think I see one more hand. Um, Mr. Stevens.
I live off of Old Warf for about, ooh, twenty years almost. And I think I've only seen one bad accident there that stopped me from going work to work. So I think this meeting is absolutely crazy. It's surprising that after the year of twenty twenty we've had that a prosperous company wants to buy land. So they have a jumping point to the Lower Cape. The company buys a commercially zoned property. The people get mad when he does something that he wants to do to the land he owns. If you felt like stopping something that happened up there, then you should have bought the land in the past twenty or thirty years. I've driven up and down Wellfleet counting all the businesses. You've got the ugly ass T-shirt places that hang out.
Mr. Stevens, Mr. Stevens, I'm gonna ask you not to speak about other people and other businesses. You have to.
I'm just stating the facts that you have.
You have to confine yourself to this case and what you want to say about this case.
Why? People are a bunch of hypocrites. Sunflower does the same exact thing.
Stevens, I'm gonna mute you. Okay, Mr. Coach. And you're gonna have to unmute, Mr. Coach. Yep.
Hi.
Hi.
I didn't know I'd be, Mr. Coach. Dwight Esty, I live on.
Can you, oh, ask Mr. Esty. Okay, thank you.
Dwight Esty, East Wall Street. Um, and I've got a couple of different issues. One is the uh concept that these would all fall under a contractor's yard. And I agree with the building inspector and not with the attorney Zander uh that screening in particular is not part of a contractor's yard. If you were to consider that a part of a contractor's yard, then I suppose you could have concrete fabrication and any fabrication of anything that they use in that business uh as part of a contractor yard. So I do consider that to be multiple uses uh and therefore would need a um a positive from the zoning board. As far as the border is concerned, uh white pines with a two inch diameter, fifty feet apart. It's gonna be two decades at least before the crowns reach each other. There was an order of conditions for the previous business, which was not allowed to have anywhere near as much clearing as the applicant has done already. Uh, and they were required to not only have uh white pines, but Leland spruces as well. So anybody that knows white pines, and particularly here on the Cape, there are many months when there are no leaves on those trees and there'll be absolutely no uh protection visual provided by that. So uh that would have to be addressed. Now, I've heard nothing about a curb cut tonight. I know at one time there was consideration of a curb cut, and I wouldn't think that that was still on the board, except that over the past weekend, uh there were two stakes that were placed exactly in the location where that original curb cut was proposed. So I don't know who put the stakes there. I don't know if curb cuts on Old Warf Road are still uh being considered or not.
No.
But I would think that uh that and but I was surprised to see stakes appear over last weekend. And I want to make sure that that still is not a consideration. Uh, in my last point, and I just want to reiterate that there was an order of conditions for the previous um business that was going to be conducted on that site. And the amount of area that they were allowed to remove trees was for the foundation in a small parking area only. So if the the applicant had done due diligence, uh they would have seen that what they have done so far was far beyond the scope of what had been considered in the past. And I think that should be given great strength uh when you're considering um any of these approvals from the zoning board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Rome.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Steve Ream. Uh, I live down Old Warf on Lookout. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. You've heard from a number of people this evening, and I know that the board has received many, many uh letters objecting to the approval of these special permits. I'm I'm not gonna go through those, obviously, or or repeat. But I would ask that um as the board decides, uh hopefully after Attorney Reed gets to speak with you, uh that you please focus on section five two of the zoning regulations, which determine special permits. Under permitted uses, it reads permitted uses and uses authorized under special permits. So this is what you gotta do. Shall be in conformity with provisions of section five three, which is fine. We've heard some about that tonight. But shall not be detrimental or offensive or tend to reduce property values in the same or adjoining districts by reason of dirt, dust, glares, odor, fumes, smoke, gas, sewage, refuse, noise, vibration, danger of exploration, explosion of fires, and traffic congestion. So what I would say is I would ask you to please not buy into what I think were somewhat vague arguments by Attorney Zander. And that you simply use your thoughtful common sense as ZBA members, that everything the applicant has proposed as usage will do almost all of those detrimental or offensive things that I just read from section five two of the zoning regs. So I would ask you to please save the abutters, the town of Wellfleet and the Old Warf neighborhood, which is right now is probably about eighty-five or ninety people uh are opposed to this and have signed up. Uh, that you save us, all of us, the town, the abutters and and the rest of us, uh years and years of disputes and money by turning down the special permit requests and maintaining the cease and desist order until the applicants come back with a business plan that meets the rules and regulations of the town of Wellfleet. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands other than people who've already had a chance to speak. So Mick, I'm gonna, have you looked at through your letters to see if there are, if you've heard from some of those people? And if not, you want to go ahead and read the ones you've got?
We do have a letter from Peter and Diane Hall. And I believe Diane is here right now if she wants to read that letter or if she wants to speak to it.
Diane, do you want to read?
The Halls are there.
Yeah, I thought they were there somewhere. Are you there, Halls?
Yes, here we go.
Here we are. Okay, would you like to read your letter?
Yeah.
Oh, actually, uh, I think the board has received our letter, right? Yes. Right, and members were able to see it. But Peter wanted to speak tonight with a few other things. Okay.
I'm Peter Hall, owner of ten nineteen State Highway, which abuts the property in question. Known as ten rentalers for the last forty years and owned by my family for fifty-two years. We've done a lot of improvements. We love having businesses by us, but we follow the rules. We've been approved by the town to do a outdoor patio. And we were planning on doing investment in it. And I stood out front all last summer because of the COVID regulations. And I'm a little concerned about the potential water, air, and noise quality issues involving this property. And we really feel we need assurances that the codes and regulations of the town of Wellfleet will be followed and that the water, air, and noise regulations will be followed also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mick, who else have you got?
I have a letter from Douglas and Cynthia Franklin.
Okay.
I'll go ahead. Members of the zoning board of appeal, we are writing to express our opposition to the proposed uses of the property at ten sixty-five Route six as a contractor yard. We believe that the decisions of the Wellfleet Building Inspector to date ought to be supported by the board. Various uses proposed for the parcel are like a bad dream on steroids. Large and high piles of unknown materials trucked in from who knows where, mixed with whatever else may qualify as construction materials, together with large machines emitting fumes and a wide variety of noises leaking hydrocarb slowly exiting and entering Route six, just as it transitions from a two lane highway to a four lane road, then back to a two lane highway. The mix of traffic uses burning and through and speed slowly accelerating, high speed, decelerating and standing makes the proposed locusts a dangerous stew. The proposed uses are out of scale compared to those along the current Route six business corridor. The proposed uses are not within what town meeting intended as constituting a contractor yard when adopting our zoning bylaws many years ago. In order to make a wise and considered decision on the further application for special permits, we believe the ZBA should request the following information from the applicant and address the following issues. A detailed site plan to indicate where and how the various proposed uses will be arranged on the. A detailed site plan to indicate where and how the various proposed uses will be arranged on the parcel, indicating all required buffers and setbacks and the design of barriers to keep those uses from infringing the buffer zones. The boundaries of the townway and the state highway should be clearly indicated. All access should be from Route Six utilizing one driveway of such size that has been approved by the state highway department for these proposed uses, not a pre-existing residential driveway approval. That access should be clearly marked and designated. All contractor vehicles should be required to come to a full stop prior to entering Route Six. No access should be allowed from Old Wharf Road. No parking by any vehicle should be allowed along Route Six or Old Wharf Road. The applicant should prepare plans for limiting noise orders and control of rodents. All oil spills should be reported to the town board of health. No repair work on site, no storage of fuel or other flammables. The ZBA should request a list of all items that will be stored on the parcel. The applicant should ensure that no hazardous waste will be carried in or stored on the lot. Restrictions should make appropriate, excuse me, appropriate range should be installed on the parcel to ensure rain runoff will not enter Old Wharf Road. The parcel should be completely fenced and landscaped so that drivers in Old Wharf Road are not distracted by operations on the parcel or blinded by vehicle or security lighting. All fencing shall remain secure to prevent unauthorized access. The applicant should be required to contribute to a Route Six highway safety design in the Marconi Lights area. Within a half mile, the highway extends from two lanes to four and back to two, returning traffic mixing with higher-speed true traffic. Consideration should be given to designing protected left lane turns. Storage and parked vehicles should be limited to vehicles and equipment owned or leased by the applicant or owned by employees. All vehicles must be currently registered and in operating condition. No storage of derelict vehicles or equipment or abandoned equipment of others. No underground tanks, no further excavations on the site without a permit from the billing inspector. All mounds of materials should be limited in height to prevent collapse or avalanche. Any security lighting must be limited to necessary illumination of the site and not neighboring properties. All vehicles, materials, and equipment shall be screened from public view and abutting property. We were disappointed in the applicant's decision to move expeditiously and without permits to clear cut and strip all vegetation from the parcel. Our neighborhood consists of over two hundred dwellings with residents that drive by the parcel every day. We see what a mess this applicant has created. So far, the owner's actions do not appear to be in the nature of good neighbors. We can only guess as to how bad things could get if the requested permits are approved. Accordingly, we would suggest if the applicant seeks a waiver or a dispensation from any town or regulation, that the ZBA not exercise their discretion in that manner. We do not think the approval of the permits requested are in the best interest of the neighborhood or the town of Wellfleet. Thank you for the opportunity to express our thoughts and concerns. Sincerely, Douglas C. Franklin and Cynthia D. Franklin. That's that one.
Thank you, Nick. I've had a request from someone, from Mr. Duva, that we pause the letters so that he could address the board, and then we come back to the letters. So I'm going to let him do that.
I apologize, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I thought I had raised my hand, but apologies if I was too late on the draw for that. So thank you to the board and for everyone on the call. My name is Jason Duva. My family's home is on East Wind Circle. As a point of process, Attorney Zender had mentioned at the start of this call, Attorney Reed requests to hold this meeting open. It wasn't clear to me at least whether he joins in and consents to that request and what the outcome of that is from the board's perspective. I simply want to emphasize what a matter of concern this is for all of the abutters and how important it would be for us to be heard by our counsel. And so as the applicant comes before the board today seeking forgiveness for their unpermitted actions, it seems to me that the least they could do is provide their clear agreement and consent for the abutters' counsel to be heard today or in the future when he's available. Ms. Brown had raised some important safety considerations regarding water pollution, and I second those comments. I would also ask the board to consider the significant concerns regarding noise pollution. As we heard today from Attorney Zender, rocks and gravel will be loaded and unloaded on a daily basis at this property. And I don't believe that any amount of fencing could ever mitigate the noise pollution that would result from that and the nuisance that it would cause. I also wish to respond to Mr. Gronlin's comments before, and apology, sir, if I don't have your name right. But in fifteen years of driving up and down Old Wharf Road, turning left and turning right, the answer is no, I don't remember ever driving past piles of concrete. My only recollection is ever driving past trees. Because the only thing that's ever been visible from Route Six and from Old Wharf Road in the last fifteen years were trees. And it wasn't until that lot was clear-cut illegally and without a permit that those bags of concrete and the concrete foundation on the lot became visible to passersby. Finally, I wish to urge the board to reject the false dichotomy that's been mentioned twice on this call between following the law and being pro-business. I've worked for several large businesses and worked for one currently over the course of my career. I purchased land for industrial use. I've helped businesses arrange for the lawful and safe storage of hazardous materials on those industrial lots. I'm about as pro-business as pro-business gets. But good businesses follow the law, and I urge this board as stewards of our town and as representatives of all the abutters to enforce our laws strictly for the safety and the future of our town. And finally, I wish to simply reiterate my agreement with all the objections raised by the previous abutters and urge this board to require the most strict adherence with our bylaws. Thank you very much for this opportunity to be heard.
Give it to Duva. Okay. All right, Nick, I'm back to you.
I think we've gone through all the ones I've had.
Okay.
The only one I have left is Mr. Glaze. You want me to read that one?
Mr. Glaze, are you here to read your own letter or not? Then I guess you should read it.
Okay, it's quite short. Mostly zoning board of appeals. I own a home at Ninety Beach Street, which is off Old Wharf Road. I am supporting the OWR Residence Group. I guess that's Old Wharf Road Group. Wellfleet may not have had a specific zone in classifications for mines, aggregates, sand, gravel staging facilities in high-traffic areas for many obvious reasons. In this particular case, the location could not be worth. It is very busy on the Old Wharf Road in the summer. Slow-moving, heavily-loaded dump trucks and other conscription equipment will exacerbate this kind of traffic and, in my opinion, will cause accidents. Permitting this use is completely inappropriate for the site, and I would underscore the fact that great Wharf Road... I'm missing a bit of this letter, but anyways, I object to any use of permit that is granted and humbly ask the zoning board of appeals to do the job and ask the owners to return the land to its original condition. Effectively submitted, Jeffrey W. Glaze.
Thank you. And Trevor, I think you may have had a couple of letters that needed to be read.
I do. I have one from Richard and Maureen Ramos. I'm not sure. Sharon, did they speak or?
I think they may have. I think they may have spoken.
That name sounds familiar.
Yes, they did speak.
Okay, good.
Okay, then I'm not going to read the letter.
Sure.
And the second letter I have is from Dwight Esty.
And he has also spoken. Yes, right, right. Okay, and I have one from Laura Kozak. Ms. Kozak, are you on the call? Would you like to read your letter? No. Okay, I will read that one then. I'm a full-time resident living at fifty Wickham Avenue, which runs off of Old Wharf Road and parallel to ten sixty-five Route Six in South Wellfleet. I have so many concerns about the use of this property by Stephen Donna Di Giovanni, as well as GFM Excavating. I am aware that it is zoned for commercial use, but I do not feel it is zoned for a contractor's yard with the size of their equipment, trucks, and the scope of all that will be housed on the property and work performed there outside. If everything they want to do requires a special permit, I believe that speaks for itself. I can see piles of sand from inside my home, as well as from my front yard when I go out to get the paper. GFM in Truro had a cease and desist order put on them because of what they were doing and well-water contamination. I have forwarded this article to Hillary Lemos. I have also spoken to Sean, who owns the Capeview Motel in Truro near GFM, and she states that the noise is constant from their work. The machine they have, which makes loam and topsoil, is a riveting type making continuous noise. I'm going to skip over some of this. The above referenced property on Route Six was purchased on Friday, January eighth. On Saturday, January ninth, the clearing started at about six forty-five AM, a noise violation, and continued through the weekend. No permit was ever issued for this work, another violation, and no plans submitted to the town. Clearly, doing this type of work on a weekend was pulling a fast one. GFM should have known better since this is the type of the work they do for a living. State property was even cleared. What will be the traffic in this area? It is extremely difficult to take a left-hand turn onto Route Six from Old Wharf. Residents now take a right-hand turn and go onto the old fire station or go with the light into Marconi. We have a lot of curb cuts in this area already, and it can become quite congested. What will it be like with the size and slow speed of this equipment? Traffic in the summer can back up in this area all the way to the Wellfleet Theaters and into East Ham. I believe the state should get involved with a traffic study since we will have an increase in traffic backup and safety. What about residential property? There is an extremely large area of homes in this area. For those of us near the site, what will happen to our property values? Also, in trying to sell with a realtor and prospective buyer on premises, how many people will be interested with the noise coming from there, seeing the size of equipment and what they want to store on this site? What will the chances be? As I stated previously, their lot on Truro leaves a lot to be desired. Noise and dust level. Sean from Capeview Motel told me the noise level is constant coming from their current yard. What about all the dust coming off of piles from the sand put soil and stone? What will this do to the quality of air we breathe? Picnics and yard activities, dust covering cars, homes, and windows, outside laundry, and my neighbor's backyard pool. Will we ever have the privilege of again opening our windows for fresh Cape air? The screening and stripping of loam, topsoil, sand, T-bay, stone, and gravel does not belong in this area. I feel I should mention Ben Rassler's Restaurant and the South Wellfleet Motor Inn. Both have been family-run businesses for decades, now sitting in VR's dining room and bar looking at these piles and machinery. Their windows will need constant cleaning. Cars in parking lot will be covered in dust. The South Fleet, where people stay on vacation, what will happen when guests are awakened by the sound of their trucks when they hope to sleep late? An outside pool area with lounge chairs that will need constant cleaning from the dust. Once again, the size of their equipment will be visible. What will it do to their business? Thank you for taking the time to read my letter, as well as all the other ones you are probably receiving. Laura Kozak. I think the others I have are Susan Reverby, which I think has she spoken? And William Tonner. And what is this one from? And...
Hi, hello, it's Susan Reverby. I'm here.
Susan, there you are. Would you like to read your letter, Susan?
No, because I'm actually in Seattle.
Okay.
So I'm at my daughter's house, but I just wanted to make two quick points. One is I've lived in the Old Wharf area now for thirty-one years, and I want to reiterate what my neighbor Deborah Dickinson said about the danger of Old Wharf. I think it is completely terrifying to think what it would be like to try to make turns at this point. And I want to remind people that it isn't just us going back and forth. It's also all the shellfish people who are part of the key businesses of our town who have a number of grants off Old Wharf. Those trucks are on that road all the time. So the combination of both the businesses that already use our road that we all support and the traffic danger. As I said in my letter, I taught my children what I call the zen of Route Six. I always hope that the road will open up and I will be able to get onto the road and that I hope that I not die on Route Six. And I am completely concerned that this new property, which clearly has a history of violating the town rules, will only make things worse and in fact cause great danger. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and I see one more hand from six one seven, six four five oh.
That's me.
That's you. Okay, all right, good. But that took care of you. All right.
Okay, thank you.
I think that takes us through all of our letters. Did I miss anyone? Okay. And Ms. Cushman.
I have a question. I live at forty-five Grove Ave for the last fifty-two years as a summer home and now as my full-time home. I have a question. How many emails were sent to Christine from the neighborhood? Because you're reading hard copy letters, I think. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're all emails, but yes, we're reading hard copy letters. I would be honest with you right now and say that I've lost count. Christine, do you have a count?
No, I do not have a count. I was still getting some today.
Yeah, yeah.
Has it been quite a few?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yes. I mean, we had we had I don't know. I really don't. I can't even guess.
So I just, the point I want to make is I support business. I support Peter and Diane. I've supported that restaurant and other businesses in Wellfleet for many years. And so I kind of, a little bit insulted by people who say that we're anti-business when there was going to be a pot shop at that place that would have been perfect, a small parking lot, a little building, you know, no problem. But I am very worried about the safety. And also, it feels like me, the scope of the project, that the work that this company is going to be doing is sort of large as opposed to small. And so it seems like the scope is a little out of, you know, sync with what they are saying that they're going to do. And so I'm worried about that. And, you know, once they get going, we won't be able to stop them. So we need to take action now, and I hope you consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I see Christine Woods, who's, we did have a letter from, who has her hand up. Would you, Christine, like to read your letter or speak to it? Christine?
I need to read the letter because it covers a lot of the same points that have already been brought up tonight.
Sure, okay.
The three major points are, of course, safety, quality of life, and aesthetics and property values. What I did want to bring up is that I think even right now, I'm at twenty-five Wickham, number one and number two, very much affected already by the project because great towering piles of sand right in back of my property. It may even be an avalanche danger. It certainly is an eyesore. I also want to bring up that ten children will regularly occupy the four homes directly abutting the project, twenty-five Wickham Ave, number one, two, three, and four, five of whom will be under the age of three. So I would say that this creates a need for vigilance. It's a residential street. It's a thriving place for families to live and recreate. The development that is proposed behind our homes there will be a danger to our health and safety. We implore the ZBA to consider our rights as residents in their decisions. Business is good, but not at the expense of resident's safety. We want to continue to keep the neighborhood safe and hospitable. And there you have my piece.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've been at this for about an hour, and I think it's time to let the board ask some questions of the applicant, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ben.
Okay, if I rebut some of these comments before the board gets into a discussion?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to note for the board, and I think you've all seen the assessments, Beth, there's only one property with a residential component that abuts this property. On the east side, it's Route Six. On the north side, it's Old Wharf Road. On the south side, it's VR's Restaurant. There's one property that abuts it between this property and Wickham Road. It's a cottage colony, or it's a condo complex, Capewood Condos. It's subject to a restriction that only Unit One can be occupied on a year-round basis. The other three units are prohibited from being occupied from November one to April one here. So I think the argument that that property has been used for many, many small tolls is probably a little disingenuous. If they are occupying it for, other than that, then it's a only violation that probably needs to be investigated. Second of all, the commercial district is the most intensive district in our zoning code. When the board looks at the zoning code, the use tables, it is the most intensive district. It's the one that's intended for the most intensive uses of property. There are no, there's no industrial district in Wellfleet, so this is the one district there. So this is the one district there, there. The, I, I thought some of the comments on conditioning were, were actually very well presented. But I want to dispute one theme which comes up over and over and over in some of the comments by some of the people that spoke today. There were no violations by the applicant cutting those trees down. Anybody who owns property in Wellfleet, as long as your property is outside of either a conservation buffer zone or a scenic byway, scenic highway road, you can cut a tree down on your property. I don't think it was advisable for the applicant to do it because it probably, you know, it put us where we are today in terms of visibility of the project. But anybody who says that they violated a regulation in doing what they did is, is, is not reading the Wellfleet regulations. The only thing, the only thing that's in contest today in front of this board is the building inspector's determination that a permit is required for site activities in advance of undertaking a use. But for this particular use, there's no building permit that's required. There's no SEPC permit that's required. There's no health permit that's required. There's no conservation permit that's required. There's no planning board that's required. So i- if the applicant wants to undertake a use that's permitted as a right on this property, they have every right to clear trees, degrade the property, to undertake the use. The only question is whether or not they can store sand and gravel and all that on the site. So, you know, I, I'd like the board. I hear somebody speaking there, Sharon.
I, I can't figure out where it's coming from, so it's a mute over here, yeah.
So, you know, to characterize the applicant as breaking a right, unwise maybe, but unlawful, absolutely not. The other theme that's consistently coming out in Old Wharf Road, and I know Old Wharf Road, I, I grew up there at the time when we were the only family on Old Wharf Road. And, you know, there have been a number of people that have moved in since and they've realized what we always realize. The end of Old Wharf Road is a dangerous intersection there. But that's a problem that's endemic to Old Wharf Road and its intersection with Route 6. That's not about this project. This driveway is, is roughly 200 feet south of Old Wharf Road. So, you know, and I, sure the chair will read the police, the police chief's email on this regard. But, you know, these, this hysteria reminds me of one of the reasons why I was divorced the first time, which was I used to tell my wife, just because you're mad doesn't mean I did something wrong. And so the board, when it hears this application, has to really focus itself to the zoning code itself and look at those, look at what's written in the zoning code. And if you can't put a, a bulk storage for singing and gravel in this part of, in this part of town, the question becomes where can you put it? Because when the town laid out zoning in Wellfleet, all of the commercial districts other than downtown, which is the central district, are along Route 6. They're designed that for a reason, to keep them out of the residential neighborhoods. And this is not a residential neighborhood. And I'll, I'll leave it there, Sharon. If the board feels that a special permit is warranted, I'll address those, those considerations at some later time. Thank you.
Okay. I think I'm going to go to the board for questions at this point so that the board can get his question. I did want to speak to the question of the Attorney Reed. I do. Believe that, that Attorney Reed should be able, I'll ask my board members on that. The Attorney Reed should be able to get a chance to speak at some point. So we probably will not be closing this hearing tonight, is that? But I'm going to ask my board members to weigh in on that. Nick?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Jan?
Fine.
Where are you, Trevor?
I'm, yeah, I'm fine with, with continuing the hearing to another night to hear from Attorney Reed. I don't think we should just stop the proceedings now.
No, I don't either. I think that we, we should. We've got a lot of questions ourselves that we haven't had a chance to ask. But I, I just wanted to reassure those people here who are afraid we're going not to listen to Attorney Reed, that we will keep the hearing open so that he has his chance to speak. Manny, would you be okay with that?
I will say yes.
Okay. And Andy?
Yes.
And Al? Where did you go, Al?
He's muted, he's muted.
Al is, by the way, fully sworn in, so he does get a vote on this part of it. I think that's everybody. Okay. All right.
I can't, I just unmuted, but I was having trouble. I'm absolutely good with it. Thank you.
Okay, good. But we aren't quitting now because now we're going to questions from the board and I will begin with you, Mick.
I don't have any questions, but I do have something to say about the project later on.
Okay. All right. We'll go to Trevor.
I'm. Not sure that I have any questions. Well, I think it might be beneficial to hear from Paul, actually. If, I don't know if that was in your.
Yep, that's, that's it. That's my next step after, after questions from you guys.
At the moment, I, I definitely, I, I agree with Mick. I have some thoughts about this, but I, I don't have any questions that I need answered at the moment, but I would like to hear from Paul.
Okay. Manny?
Um, I just wanted Ben to clarify if they were going to screen loam and that was my biggest question on that.
Sharon, Manny?
Yes.
Through the chair, Manny. I agree with Paul. I, I think screening of loam is not part and parcel of, of a contractor's yard business. I, in my reading of the, I think it's light industry or depending on how the board views it, it could be deemed to be heavy industry. If the board feels that this is important, we can certainly drop screening of loam from the property.
Okay. That answers that.
Did you have anything else, Manny?
Later.
Okay, later. Jan?
Well, I have lots of questions as usual. I separated them out into questions that related specifically to 2113, questions that related to 2114. And, you know, I have questions about 2115 if we get to that point. But they, they relate specifically to special permits. Sharon, I, I don't quite know how to proceed with this. Do we not have to discuss 2013 and 2014 first? Or we can deal with 2015?
Yep. I'm just trying to get a couple of sort of top line questions and then go to Paul before we go.
Why don't we go to Paul and then I'll deal with questions?
All right. Paul, where are you? It's here somewhere.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Very good. You're here.
I guess first of all, I respond to, would you like me to go through the timeline of how I, I came about to the cease and desist or? So on January 11th, I'm driving down Route 6. I saw that the lot had been cleared and that was where it had not been cleared before. And my first thought was that I don't recall a permit being issued for the, for that lot clearing. And thought that perhaps it could have been issued by the previous building inspector. So I got to the Building Department Office. I checked the files. There had been no permit filed later that day on January, the 11th. I went back and called GFM Construction and he got on the phone with Steve Giovanni and myself on a call and we agreed to meet. He, I asked him what, what they were doing there, what, why they hadn't applied for permits and what the, their project was. And they said they weren't sure what they were doing. I met with Steve Giovanni on the 13th of the, at the site again to discuss what their plan was for the property. And at that time, he said he was going to use it to, for a new home for GFM. They were going to park some trucks there. It would be screening of topsoil and loam, storage of sand, tea base. When I asked him about the large piles of soil, what they were doing, he told me that they were all going away, that they would be, they would be going away, that they were going to be processed and taken away. I asked about the, what he, his plans were for the existing foundation on the property. He told me that he was considering building the storage facility that had been previously approved at one time. And so I told him at that time, he was going to need permits for any of the work that he was doing and install erosion control on the property. And left. That, at the, the day I met him, there was no activity on the site. There were no, no bulldozers going, no machinery working. The next day, I drove by the site, there was more materials being hauled in, more sand being brought into the site. And that was when I issued the cease and desist order that, based on the storage of materials there and that they were going to, the topsoil had been stripped and that the topsoil was going to be removed from the site and that there were no permits in place. The next day on the 15th, Steve Giovanni, he submitted a permit. The permit was for to excavate and clear and leveled the lot. The same day, the client's attorney, Mr. Zender called and he asked if I had gotten the application. I told him I had and that the plan, the application was going to require a plan with it. Alls I got was an application and no plan as to what they were going to do and their intention for clearing or replanting the, regitating the site. On the 19th, I spoke, January the 19th, I spoke again with Steve Giovanni. I told him that the application was incomplete until I received a plan. Again, on January the 29th, I spoke with Attorney Zender, asking that we needed a site plan for it. Against, on January the 27th, I spoke with Mr. Giovanni and his, one of his landscape foremen, Keith Fernandez. And again, the, they were mentioning the processing of loam was going to be taking place on the lot. On February the 1st, I received an email from Attorney Zender stating that there was no intention to prepare the lot for the building for the issuance of a building permit. And he asked to provide a determination prior to February 13th so that I could, so that he could appeal my decision for the, the cease and desist order. On February the 11th, I responded with a determination that a special permit was required for bulk storage in industry as processing of loading sand, loam, gravel in and out of trucks constituted placing materials into a container, packaging them in such a way that they would be removed from the site or delivered to the site, whichever the case may be. I told him at that time, it was likely that the project at the definition of a contractor's yard. But I wasn't 100% convinced because I requesting more information at that time on the number of vehicles. I need want a detailed information on how many vehicles are going to be there. Setbacks, what was going to be stored there? And at that time, in summary of that same letter, I left it at that special permits would be required for bulk storage in industry light. He also asked that the owner asked for lifting of a cease and desist order so that they could remove the materials from the site and complete grading the site. And I never heard back on that. So this is kind of part of the building permit process is that we ask for more information. As we get more information given to us, we're better educated to make informed decisions on what exactly the, the project is going to be. So when I got the plan and the, the narrative from Attorney Zender about what vehicle is going to be stored there on the 17th of February, I received a list of the vehicles, the, how many 10-wheels are going to be, there are going to be excavators for storage, storage containers. And at that time, at that time, it's the likelihood of it being a contractor yard changed because it stated that the vehicles are not going to be just parked there, but they're going to be used. They were going to have actually vehicles. And the definition of a contractor's yard states that it's for parking of vehicles, not, not vehicles being used at the site to load and unload trucks and stone, sand, gravel, loam. The I issued on February the 22nd, I issued a permit denial and referral to the board for the bulk open storage of light industry as the use of heavy equipment is not part of the contractor's yard. Also, there's other, other requirements for permitting would be for the retaining wall on the site. There's grading, grading permits need to be, or I don't have else other than that. I hope you can follow that. I'm sorry, I just, I, I had to read from what I had written down here. I guess, I guess the other part of is responding to, to Mr. Zender that a permit is not required for a permitted use in that district. Permitted use is not the same as a permit to use the land. The use of the land requires a permit from the building official for uses that are right compliance with zoning regulations, regional regulations such as landscape buffering, conservation and any other requirements. So it's not the applicant's decision on whether they need a permit or not. It's the building commissioner makes that decision if they're required or, or if they don't require a permit. So although structure is not being proposed in parts of land, this doesn't mean that you don't need a permit for the use of the land. That's really all I have.
Paul, if you would just stay on, I'm going to ask the board if they have questions for you and I'm going to start with Nick.
Thanks, Sharon. Now my, the inspector answered all my questions. My main one was if this did or did not require a permit. And he answered that question for me, so that's it.
Thank you. Trevor?
Yeah, I'm good at the moment.
Manny?
I'm good with that.
Um.
He answered my questions.
Okay. Jan?
Um, I think he definitely answered my questions as it relates to 2113 because, yes, from his timeline, I understand exactly how he made his decisions. Um. Yeah, I have questions as it relates to how much, how much soil, loam, stone is intended to be stored at this site, how it's going to be stored? How it's going to be? I have questions about screening of topsoil and loam as well. Attorney Zender mentioned something about perhaps withdrawing that. But I, I'd like to know just, you know, what kind of quantities of, of these loose materials are going to be stored here? And how, how often are they going to be moved around during the day? A typical day?
That's a question for Ben then.
Yes, that's a question for Ben. Yep.
I'd just like to interrupt this for a moment. I think it would be easier for all of us if we could ask that Ben tell us exactly and identify specifically every operation that is intended for this piece of property or use. Because I feel as though there's been a bit of a moving target here. And I really feel it's only fair to us if we're going to be able to make a reasonable determination that we know precisely what is going to be done on this property.
I would agree with you, Andy, and I would agree with, I would add to that what and where. Because I find the site plan to be inadequate. I don't see. I do not, I do not see the, I mean, this is a property that without a building on it, needs a hundred-foot setback in the front, a 35-foot setback in the back and 35 on each side. The, the, the building that was there had a 50-foot setback because it was intended to be a wood frame building, which we allow by special permit to have a 50-foot setback. And this board has a precedent of not allowing activity by businesses in the setback. So I'd like to see those setback lines on that site plan, which I don't see. Which I don't see right now. I'd like this site plan to be stamped. So I mean, there are a lot of questions similar to Andy's questions about how much and to Janet's, how much, where, how often? We've got a list of the trucks. That's that we've got, but we don't have these other things.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I I thought I was answering one question and two more people jumped in with additional questions, so I'm going to try.
Yes.
Sorry, Ben.
And I've forgotten the first one. I I I remember Andrew's question, which is he wants to know exactly what's going on there, I think is what the question was, but I forget the question before that.
Question before that was how much? The Jan's question about how much?
Thank you. Okay.
What does look like? Are how tall are those piles? Things like that.
Okay, well, first of all, the site plan has been proposed. I think the board has the site plan. You all have. Okay, the plan shows the locations of the parking of vehicles. It shows the location for excavator and loader storage. It shows the entrance. It shows the storage container and it shows the proposed storage areas. If the board's looking for something more specific, we're happy to do that. If the board's looking for some conditions on, for example, where particular activities occur or how far back something occurs. Obviously, that's part of the discussion. The setback that the that the bylaw proposes, that the bylaw talks about is a building setback. It's not a use of lot. The landscaping provisions talk about where your landscaped areas are and how your use areas are screened from the roads. But and those numbers are very different from building setbacks. We can certainly talk about those later. With regard to amounts, I'm going to let Greg Morris jump in in a minute and just talk about, because he understands cubic yards. I don't. But you have what we've presented to you by way of the appeal is a specific list of the of the equipment, a specific list of the materials, a specific list of those stats. So I don't think we can improve upon that. But I can tell you that the activity that's proposed is you have to remember the activity that's undertaken here doesn't occur on site. The excavating business occurs at the site that's being cleared, where the foundation is being dug, where the septic system is being installed. This site is where trucks get parked overnight. It's where employees pick up trucks in the morning. It's where they go out and if they have to come back with a load of sand and put it here, it goes here. If they have to remove some materials from here to take it to the site, it gets removed. So what I've been described is that two employees come to the site, they pick up trucks, they go, they may bring a load back or pick up a load at some point during the day and then they park them at night. If the board wants to entertain some number of trips, we can certainly talk about it with the applicant to make sure that that's feasible. For sheer quantities, I can, I can ask Greg to talk about that in one moment, if you don't mind. I think that would be the easiest thing to do. So I do think, looking at the materials that are in front of me right now, this site plan and the description is as descriptive as any description that this board sees for a special permit. So do you want me to 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 get have Greg just talk about the the amount that would be stored on site?
I think that was Jan's question, yes.
I think that was. Yeah, I want to make sure I stay with your questions.
Jan, wait, wait, Jan.
Could I just say something first?
Certainly.
I have two pages, typed written pages of questions. Most of them, though, relate to special permit and to this site plan, but I'm not, I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate to start asking all those questions until we make some sort of decisions on twenty one thirteen and twenty one fourteen and ask only questions relevant to that, because why would we even consider twenty one fifteen? Decisions.
Yes.
I think like Jan, I I think the first question is whether or not the building inspector was correct in determining it was quarrying activity. And the second question is whether or not it requires a special permit for sand and gravel. And I think the third set of questions is, do we meet the standard for a special permit? But I I get the way that the the board wants me to do it, so.
I'm okay with that. I'd like to say, ask Paul then in that case, is there anything you've heard tonight that makes you rethink either of your of your first two cease and desist orders?
No, there is not, just that that the the coring is what the stripping of topsoil and the removing of the material from from the site. The excavation, the excavation that took place in the lot.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have one question for the building inspector just before we get off, because I I want to make sure I understand. I think I'm a little confused. I read, Paul, I read your decision as saying that the proposal to have trucks come in and park and leave the site and go out and do what you're doing was a contractor's yard, but that by having the materials on site and putting the materials on site and taking them off, that was a use that required a special permit, open bulk storage. Is your opinion that the contractor's yard itself as presented is not a contractor's yard or that or that it's permissible without that element? I just didn't, I wasn't quite sure.
I don't, with the information available to me now, I I don't see it being fitting as a contractor's yard with with tracked vehicles, with excavators in the site. The talks about wheeled equipment for a contractor's yard, not not tracked machines. And it talks about parking of vehicles, not not using tractors to load and unload trucks. The other part of it is, is our definition of a of a yard in in the wealthy zoning bylaws is a a place, a place in a lot with a building on it, space in a lot with a building on it. And there's no being proposed here. Otherwise, I think the contractor, they're called a contractor's parcel or a contractor's lot.
All right. So.
Can I ask a question? Would it be possible to ask a question?
Yes, you can ask a question now.
Um, yeah, I'm new to the board, so if the horse is out of the barn on this, please forgive me. But according to my reading of the bylaws, how does this characterize itself as industry light? When it is pretty clear that there are many objectionable features to the use of this property, including noise, dust, vibration that affect butters? You know, who decided that this was industry light? And that this, you know, property fell into that category?
That question to me?
I I don't know who. Yeah. It's a general question.
Yeah, well, I think it would be up to the the property owner to control that.
But I think it's been mischaracterized.
Noise, noise, dust, vibration does not leave the property.
But how how can you, how can you argue that when you're, you know, moving sand and loam and and stuff like that? I I mean, those mountains of of sand that are there now are literally almost ready to fall over into the backyard of one of the abutting properties.
Um, it's a very good point out, and it is, it gets to the question of of what this property could get a special permit on. And I think, so hold that thought. But I think what we need to do is take a look at twenty one thirteen, which is the cease and desist and abate order. And I'd like to hear from the board their questions about that and whether or not that we are going to affirm the building inspector's ruling here or whether we want to rescind that cease and desist order. And so I will start again with you, Mick. Do you have any thoughts, questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but to move the process along, I I agree with the building inspector on the cease and desist.
Manny?
I agree with the building inspector.
Trevor?
Come, come back to me if you will.
Okay, Dan.
Um, well, we're not taking a vote just yet, but I have one question for the building inspector through you, Sharon. Called a cease, desist and abate order. Can you tell me what abate means? Does it? Does it have anything to do with perhaps restoring the property to the best? At all, if at all possible?
The abate would would just be to to undo his violation of of not having permits and stripping of the topsoil, just to get his permits in place and provide us with a plan of what it is that they're actually going to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Andy?
No, I don't, you asking what my thoughts are?
Thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I I'm in favor of it.
Okay, and Al?
Nonvoting, but I agree with Mr. Fowler's conclusions.
As, as do I. Now I'm going to ask my lawyer who's here somewhere. Where are you, Jonathan? There you are. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. We've gone through that first one. Do I now call for a vote or do I need findings or what is the procedure on that one?
So if I can ask?
Yes.
It was my impression from your earlier comments that you might be continuing the public hearing until next meeting when Attorney Reed can join us. Is that still the?
Yes, yes.
So I think i- in that case, we might want to not make a determination
Okay.
as to twenty one thirteen tonight, allow for Attorney Reed to make his presentation. And then at that point, if there's no other comments, the board can close on case thirteen and make a ruling on that.
Okay.
But there's a different view. I'm happy to talk it through.
Yeah, I I have a question for Attorney Murray. If the, if Attorney Reed is not here and we have a vote and it essentially agrees with what his position is on the matters in front of the board, do we still need to have him do that? Or can we go ahead and have a vote as it's not an adversarial vote as regards Attorney Reed's position?
If Attorney Reed is unable to attend the next meeting, you are permitted to to make a vote and take note of his letter. You're not required to wait for him, no.
Okay, so.
Wait for him in either, in any case at all.
Yeah, my question is Yeah, my my last question for Attorney Murray is if we read Attorney Reed's letter right now, wouldn't that be? So then we could go ahead and and have a vote on twenty one thirteen.
You could, if that is what the board wants to do tonight, you could, but again, it's, I think it's just a matter of keeping them all, it might be easier to keep them all together, but I understand the the desire to want to make a decision on twenty one thirteen now. You're, it's within your power if you want to make it now. If you want to wait for Attorney Reed, you could do that and make a decision on everything next time. So it's a, it's a discretion up to the board.
I think we can keep the the click, the hearing stays open, even if we've made a decision on twenty one thirteen or even twenty one fourteen, because then we come to twenty one fifteen, and that is the crux of the matter for Attorney Reed, I believe, but I could be wrong about that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
As long as the board files all of its decisions at the same time, just for the sake of ease of tracking appeal dates and all that, that's all we would ask. So we're easy away. Thank you.
Okay. So what is your sense, Board? Do you want to go forward with this one or do you want to hold it to the side and look at twenty one fourteen?
Madam Tim?
Yes.
Clear then, can we close the pub, if we make the decision, can we close the public hearing on twenty one thirteen and perhaps twenty one fourteen? And then keep the public hearing open on twenty one fifteen?
I believe we can, Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes, and Ben would only request that we not file twenty one thirteen and twenty one fourteen until after we've had twenty one fifteen.
Right, okay, got it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask two questions of Attorney Zender while we're on the topic of thirteen very quickly?
Yes.
Attorney Zender, I'm just, in in regards to twenty one thirteen, I understand that before the building inspector issued the January fourteenth cease and desist, that there was grading on the site and the removal of topsoil. Do you know how much topsoil was removed? Oh, you're muted, Ben, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jonathan. I don't believe that any topsoil was removed. I believed it was scraped and left on site. I'm going to just text my client, just confirm that before we get off, but I believe everything is still there. So I, and that's why I don't think this is a quarrying situation, because I don't think it was removed offsite for use elsewhere.
Well, then that's my next question, to the extent that soil was graded and it's your client's intent to remove it. Where is it going to be removed and for what purpose?
Very quickly, just just before I answer that, I just got a text from my client. Nothing has been removed from the site. Nothing has been removed. Yeah, I believe the intention with the topsoil was to raid the site, create the area for the vehicles and then restore the topsoil and replant and vegetate around the edges and do all the work with the topsoil and keep it on site as part of the site. It it's possible, and I just, I'm not being evasive. I just don't know the answer. It's possible that some of that, they wouldn't have needed all of it. It might have been screened and then put into the bins to to use in the normal course. But the intention was not to to clear that site for the purposes of removing materials for sale to other parties.
Well, I guess my concern, and I certainly, my last question, Madam Chair. My concern is that the definition of topsoil stripping in the bylaw talks about not only sale but use at another site. So if, to the extent that soil was being removed from this site and then screened and used at, you know, a job of the contractor, would that not fall under the definition of topsoil stripping?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think we I think we established that, that the topsoil was stripped.
Yes. Yes.
One, one other thing, Madam Chair, if I may. Attorney Zander said he got a text from his client saying nothing was removed from the lot. That's incorrect. All the trees were removed. So that needs to be made to make a note of that as well.
Hey, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I I've got a note for my client. All the topsoil is going to stay on the site. I don't and again, Mick, you may be right about trees being removed. I think there were a bunch of trees that have been knocked over and dead. They may have removed those from the site, but I don't think those would fall into the coring by law.
All right. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have one further question. So if our building inspector believed at the time that he issued the cease and desist order that that topsoil was going to be removed or had been removed. I don't, how, how do we think about?
I don't think it's our job to decide what, you know, the, the, what we are appealing is that the clearing of the property violated eight point two permit required. And and the additional thing and the other thing is that the quarry, bulk storage, quarry, sand put in stop soil, but there was also the issue of eight point two and the fact that clearing this lot without a permit and having told the building inspector what's your plan to do with the lot constitutes a violation.
About about eight point two. Thank you.
Yes, right. So.
We move forward on twenty one one thirteen and take a vote?
I think that we, I think I prepared to do that. Trevor?
Yeah, I think I'm I'm fine with that.
Dan?
So do we make a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion. And I believe the motion would be to uphold the building inspector's cease and desist order. Is that correct, Jonathan?
Yes, the January fourteenth cease and desist order.
January fourteenth cease and desist order. Yes, I need a motion to that.
I will make a motion that we have a vote to uphold the building inspector's cease and desist order from January fourteenth.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, and then all in favor, I need to voice vote. So it is Manny?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Janet? And Sharon, yes. Okay, so we're done with twenty one sixteen.
Thank you.
Thirteen.
Twenty one thirteen. I'm getting ahead of myself. All right. Would you like to take up twenty one fourteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you need, why not?
Why not? Okay, so this one is, and I think everybody's already spoken, that what is being done on the property, this one is basically saying that what is being done on the property is requires a special permit for bulk storage, open and for industry light. I think you don't have to get hung up on exactly what, but that I think what we're really dealing with is when we're saying this is we're upholding the idea that this is not a contractor's yard with incidental things, that it is something else that needs a special permit. Is that fair, Paul?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so question, question, yes, okay, Ben.
I I would ask for a clarification if we, and we are formally requesting that we remove from any use of the site, screening of topsoil, meaning it would only be the other uses that we proposed. So I I believe that takes industry light off the table, but I think that's the building inspector's determination.
Yeah.
Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I would say that just the, the uh use of machinery at the site to load uh stone, gravel, topsoil into a truck would uh do industry light. That's not something that would be incidental to a a contractor's yard or or to bulk storage. Establishes packaging by by taking that material and putting it into containers constitutes packaging.
Industry light is very, you know, yeah.
And I could be wrong, I could be wrong.
Industry light is fabrication, assembly, processing, finishing work or packaging in such a manner that dust, noise, odor, vibration or similar objectionable features are confined to the premises and are in no way objectionable to the abutting property. So, I mean, we've got a question about that packaging anyway, but certainly it does constitute some form of industry to my thinking.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, eh eh, look, you have in the code, you have a class which is called bulk storage open. And bulk storage open is in fact, um, and and I'll read it for the board, just just so we can get, it's exposed outside storage of sand, lumber, coal or other bulk materials or supplies. You can't get sand, lumber, coal or other bulk materials in and out of a truck without loading them in some way. So industry, heavy and light, I believe, is is geared towards an industry that takes place on the property. You have a manufacturing, you're manufacturing, you're building, you're processing, you're creating something that has as its byproduct some objectionable feature, noise, dust, light, something like that. And it's, and there's light and heavy depending on the gradation of that. If you say that loading sand or stone in and out of a storage container into a truck is industry of some type, you're you're shutting the door on on Tommy Edwards, for example, you know, that's that's not it, so it's not industry. I agreed with the building inspector that industry light could be processing of topsoil, crushing of debris, screening of loam, things like that, because you're processing material. But if you're just moving something in and out of a storage bin, I think that's part and parcel of bulk storage open. Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
I'm inclined to agree with Ben.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The uh, I would say that bulk storage is, I mean, sand, coal, um, could be bagged material, it doesn't necessarily have to be um loose, loose, it could be in a bag, so it's uh something that could be loaded unloaded by hand, not not necessarily with a a machine.
Right. Well, I I think in this case, and keep me honest if I'm if I'm not, but I think that, you know, the the basis of 2114 is that whatever is being done on this property requires a special permit. And um, and that was the building inspector's determination and that was the basis for his denial of the permit and his referral of it to us. So, I mean, I think in my mind, the building inspector made the right call on this, um, it does need a special permit. When we start getting into what is and isn't industry heavy or light or what is or is not appropriate to the property, I think that's when we're in the territory of 2115 of the special permit itself. Um, and so it seems to me we could deal with 2114, but I'm open to to comment.
Well, okay, let me, I have two questions.
I meant, no, you're, I'm I'm talking to the board right now, thank you. Oh, oh, you're the contractor?
I can't hear him.
I don't, I I'm not sure who he is either, sir, I'm not sure who you are. Well.
Now, can we keep the conversation amongst the the board for the time being?
Yes. Trevor?
Uh, well. Uh, um. Yeah, I'm 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 inclined to think that the storage of, the bulk storage of materials there, that being the big piles of sand and and whatnot, would constitute bulk storage as defined in the zoning bylaw. And therefore, which in the commercial district is an allowed use with a special permit. So therefore, a special permit would be required, in which case we would be upholding or agreeing with the building inspector on that. In my opinion.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Manny?
I I agree with Trevor, um. But then, what is the building inspector saying about loading it?
Well, I I don't, I do not agree with the building inspector in that sense. I think bulk storage to me does not imply two, two cubic foot yard, two cubic yard, two cubic foot bags of mulch that you you buy at Ace Hardware. Bulk storage implies big piles of material.
I agree.
Um, you know, a contractor is not going to be shoveling it by hand in and out of a truck, he's going to be using some kind of equipment. And so to me, bulk storage fairly obviously requires equipment to get it on and off trucks to be stored on the site. You know, that that being said, th- this is the commercial district, this is the only spot in town that we allow this activity. So this gets into, I'm getting into 2115, I suppose, so.
Yeah, you are, right now I'd like to stay with 2114.
Staying with 2114, I believe that bulk storage would require a special permit. I do not think the contractor's yard requires a special permit.
No.
It's an allowed use without one, um, although I I think you can certainly argue that it would have required um a building permit, which I guess is what we voted on in 2113.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yep, okay. Um, who haven't I heard from, Andy?
Andy went to sleep, fell asleep.
No, no, he, instead of unmuting, he stopped his video, there he goes, now unmute, you stopped your video before. God.
Alright, that's better, you can't get me anywhere near a computer. Um, my apologies. Yeah, I I I have to go back, uh. I feel a little bit uncomfortable kind of continuing on with this, I know it's not the sentiment of the rest of the board members and I'm not a voting board member, but we don't have Attorney Reed here tonight and I would prefer that we hold off making decisions on anything further until we've heard from hi- him. That's my personal opinion, as, uh, yes, I I I do have my my own opinions about what what this constitutes, uh, but I just assume not even voice them at this point, because I don't believe that uh we should uh make any further determinations on this particular matter or the last one um tonight, so. And obviously, I, my my assumption was we were not going to as to the to the third matter. But they, these are so interrelated, uh, so at any rate, I think uh I think it's the proper thing to do would be to wait uh for Attorney Reed to appear and present an argument, arguments.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Um, right now I'm confining the conversation to the board, I will, I will come back to you if I have, if I can, Jan, Jan.
Yeah, Sharon, um, in terms of uh industry, whether it's light, heavy, whatever, I would have to have a far better understanding of what kind of sub-assemblies are going to be fabricated on this site, what kind of tools are going to be used to 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 do that. That sounds like something that's going to be carried on throughout the day, I I don't know, but I I would want a lot more information about that. There's also going to be some, a lot of, from what I understand, a lot of uh heavy materials being left at this site. Uh, I'd like to know what kind of vehicles are going to do that, there's going to be concrete forms, uh, concrete risers, uh, steel plates. There's also something about containers, are these shipping containers, are that, we're going to have trucks coming in and dropping shipping containers? The industry light or industry heavy or something.
I'm becoming convinced by Andy's argument that perhaps these two are too interrelated to talk about until we've had a chance to let Mr. Reed give his presentation.
I agree with that, Madam Chairperson.
Um, any other thoughts, Trevor?
Uh, yeah, I don't know how I feel about that.
Mm-hmm.
Eh eh, I think it's unfortunate that he couldn't be here, um, on the other hand, he did, he did send a lengthy letter that we have all read. They, he he's representing applicants, uh, many of which, there's 79 people in this meeting, um, many of which are here and can certainly speak for themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Not the applicant. Um. I don't know, I I I mean, I'll defer to what the rest of the board wants to do, but I honestly don't see any reason why we can't continue to move forward and discuss this tonight.
Okay, Manny?
Um, I think I'd rather wait for Attorney Reed and give him a chance to um to state all his concerns or his client's concerns. Well, I can go, I can go either way.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to be, make sure that I was clear, uh, it's not that I don't think we can discuss it in general, but I believe that
Yes.
we should not be getting to a point where we're polling or getting getting close to that, but without giving him the opportunity to present.
Yeah, I was just thinking that we would, that, you know, since so much of this, this is where I'm I'm kind of torn, is that, so to me, so much of 2114 is, it speaks to the argument that the applicant needs a special permit. Um, and that that was the building inspector's decision and I agree with that decision. So I don't have a problem going ahead and saying yes on 2114 on the narrow issue of do we um do we uh approve, you know, affirm the building inspector's decision? I could easily go on that one tonight. Once we start getting into the conversation about what's going to happen on the property and the appropriateness of that, then I think definitely we should be waiting. And to me, that's a conversation for 2115, but I could be wrong about that. I mean, I am certainly not um going to force the board to do anything they're uncomfortable with.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You know, I I firmly believe that nothing good happens after 9:00 PM. So, you know, we have no problem with requesting it continue and so that the board can can regroup with Attorney Reed present to uh present his, present his opinions before the board moves on the second application.
Alright. How does my board feel, does anyone want, where do you want to go with this?
Doesn't matter to me.
Mm-hmm, okay, Nick?
Yeah, you know, listening to Trevor and and Manny, 2114 is such a narrow issue, I could, I could vote enough, I'd either way with me. 2114.
Let's do it.
Yeah, I I'm comfortable voting on 2114, but I really don't want to go any further until we hear from Attorney Reed on the crux of the matter.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, if to me, this determination is very specific, there were two points. Is it, uh, does it need a permit for open storage bulk and does it need a permit for industry light? And also, there was a number, a second one, the applicant's grading of the property per permitted contractor's yard requires a permit from the building inspector. If if we're going to have a discussion about, is it industry light and what does that mean, then, as I said, I have a lot more questions and it, I mean, if if the other board members feel that it is an industry light, I'd like those questions answered.
But I think, the thing is, I think based on the timeline, the question is, based on what the applicant submitted, eh, which included the screening of the topsoil, um, was this two things that needed a permit? And I think eh it was, um, the applicant could come back and take away the industry, the screening of the topsoil and say, the applicant is not going for industry light, they're simply going for bulk storage open. But that's, I think the building determination was based on what we had in the narrative, which may or may not have been industry light, but certainly was industry.
Okay, alright.
But, you know, I'm not trying, we can certainly keep this open, I, I'm not, go ahead.
Speak to the second one as well about the applicant's grading of the property for from permitted contractor's yard requires a permit from the building inspector.
Right. I believe that's a building code issue, is it not, Paul?
Yes, that's correct, that would, that wouldn't be appealable to to this, to the zoning board, that would be appealable to the uh building, building code appeals board.
Right. Yeah. So.
So if it's based on the narrative that was before, is the information that was given to the building inspector at those, that time, when he made those determinations, I could vote tonight as well.
So do we need to make a motion on it?
We need to make a motion, yes.
How do you want the motion to read?
Um, it's similar to the other one, it's similar, it is that the um the zoning, go ahead, Jonathan, tell me what this is, what the motion should sound like.
Uh, the board could make a motion to affirm the building inspector's determination that the proposed use by the applicant um would require a special permit for bulk storage open and industry light, the open storage of material and screening.
Do we need the dates of those determinations in this, I think we do, you know.
That would be, yeah.
Yeah, the, those determinations were February 11th and February 22nd. So are people supposed to pick up on it, is she supposed to pick on it?
I can hear someone talking.
I can hear someone talking, please mute yourself wherever you are. Um. Okay, so Mick, are you going to make that motion, is that what you've decided?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we uphold the building inspector's finding that this does need a special permit.
I'll second it.
Alright, um, so now I'm going to go in favor, um, Manny, Manny seconded, Jan?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
And Sharon, yes, okay. So, what we will, we will continue the discussion, having cleared off those other two, the the meeting for next time, the continuation would be 2115, whether or not the applicant, you know, the applica- applicant's request for a special permit to undertake these activities, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question, please?
I I think the meeting is closed, actually, so you can hold back question for next time.
I'm trying to find out, did you vote to support?
Sorry, sir, the meeting is closed.
Did you support the building inspector on 2114, that's all I'm trying to get out.
I'm sorry, yes, yes, the vote was to support, to affirm the building inspector's determination on both 2113 and 2114.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, okay, um.
So I guess now we make it, do we make a motion to adjourn the meeting to the next hearing?
Actually, we make a motion, first of all, to continue.
Continue.
You what I mean, yeah.
To continue this to the next meeting, which is, Christine, when is the next meeting?
April 8, Madam Chair.
April 8, okay, that's what I thought, to continue to April 8 um for the purposes of hearing 2115.
So moved.
So moved.
On second.
Okay, all in favor, Manny?
Aye.
Um, Andy?
Aye.
Um, Nick?
Aye.
Where did I lose people, Trevor?
Yes.
And Jan?
Aye.
And Sharon, aye, and Al?
No, not voting.
No, he doesn't, no, you don't have to do it, no, you're not on the board, sorry about that.
I am on the board, but I'm.
You're not on on this board, actually Andy wasn't either, so Andy's eye doesn't count either. But I do not want a motion to adjourn because we have minutes and we did not do minutes last time.
Okay.
because of the executive session, so we need two minutes. So, alright, folks, we will see you back on April 8 at 7 o'clock to hear 2115. And I thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You all have a good night. But board, you have to stay here and vote on minutes. So Chris, we have the minutes from which meetings? Chris?
I don't have my calendar in front of me.
I'm sorry, we have the minutes from.
It would have been February and then our first meeting in March.
In March. So wait a minute, I have my calendar.
February.
February one was.
Like 17th, 14th?
February was the 11th.
211, okay.
211 and, and March 11th.
Okay, thank you.
So I need a motion to approve, do we have to do them separately?
Technically, we do.
Okay, so I need a motion for the February minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the February minutes.
Okay, Trevor was second. All in favor, Jan?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And that's the only, all that was on, was there. You don't get to do those now. And then I need a motion for the March 11th meeting.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Trevor beat you that time and you seconded, and so all in favor. Jan?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
And Sharon, yes.
And Al was there, weren't you, Al?
Al was there, but I don't think he was sworn in, so he can't, he can't vote on those minutes because he wasn't sworn in.
Sorry, sorry.
Right. So, but he is sworn in now, so.
I am, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Congratulations.
Yes. You picked a great meeting to start with. Alright, folks, I think we can have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. Second.
There you go. And I don't think you need a voice vote to adjourn, do you, Jonathan?
You can do one. You could just all say aye, it's fine.
Aye. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye. Good night.
Good night.